I would like to call the Fairfield County Council Regular Meeting to Order. Wentzboro, South Carolina, Monday, December 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposes, nay. That the record shows six, zero. And while I'm at this part, Mr. Robinson called and reported that he is not feeling well, and he did have some surgery, so he just wanted the council to know. Invocation, Councilmember Roseborough.
2022.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Has been moved in second for the approval of the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposes, nay. That the record shows six, zero. Approval of the minutes. Public presentation is nine. Item six, first public comments section. Dr. Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. Fairfield County Government welcomes public input during appropriate times at county council meetings. Such input will be allowed in the time, place, and manner determined by the Chair of the County Council as the Presiding Officer. Persons wishing to speak must conduct themselves in the following manner. Sign up at the appropriate time to speak. Should refrain from engaging in conduct or speech that seeks to disrupt or disturb the meeting. Must respect the time limit for the public comments. And must refrain from personal attacks or personal statements about any individual or individuals. Such statements are disruptive because this part of our meeting is not conducive for such exchanges between individuals. As stated, speakers are expected to express themselves within the time, place, and manner previously described. Any violation will result in a warning from the Chair of County Council or the Presiding Officer. Any failure to heed the warning of the Chair or Presiding Officer will result in the violating speaker forfeiting their opportunity to finish speaking or to speak during the remainder of the meeting. Council welcomes the comments from members of the public and asks for the cooperation of everyone to allow for the orderly conduct of the people's business. Several people signed up to speak. First person, Carl Bell.
Good evening, County Council. I'm Carl Bell, a resident of Jenkinsville. I was born and raised in this close knit community and become an active supporter of the progressive citizens group of Jenkinsville as they seek to build a memorial wall off Highway 215 on the Lake Booker T. Martin's property, which is now owned by the county. This proposed community memorial wall will restore value, admiration, and continued closeness to our small community. The individuals who will be placed on the front of this wall made valuable contributions to the Jenkinsville community. Mr. Booker T. Martin was an exhaustible businessman, church leader, and community activist. His business attracted many well-known singers, actors to the community for various supporting events. Mr. Henry Yarborough was a kind and considerate businessman and town magistrate who worked and supported the efforts of the black community in Jenkinsville. His business also provided jobs for people in the community, and his business was a major shopping spot for all types of goods and services in Jenkinsville. Mrs. Anobia Davis Dixon was an intellect and a forceful schoolteacher as well as a voting rights and civil rights activist in the community. Her name is synonymous with community activism. Mr. Howard Whitaker, during this time, lobbied for the County Council of Fairfield County to bring electricity to the only school in Jenkinsville at the time, Camp Liberty, and to provide buses for the children of the Jenkinsville community to get to school. Mr. Thomas Feaster was a community minister, a family man, and the first African-American firefighter in Jenkinsville. This is not an exhaustive list. There are others who will be added to this wall as well. I could go on with many other residents who have passed and contributed to the Jenkinsville success and survivor. However, their names will be placed on the brick wall upon completion, as well as those who are living and still supporting and active in the Jenkinsville community. As we move about this county, the state, we often see names of individuals who have made great contributions to their counties and states. These great men and women have been honored with plaques, honorary statues. We in Jenkinsville would like the opportunity and support of you, County Council, to do the same in honoring those who made great contributions to our community and would love your support, vision, and resources. We know not where the county or ourselves would have ended up at the time. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for an opportunity to speak before you.
Roberta Gay.
Good afternoon. My name is Roberta Gay. We, the citizens of Jenkinsville, on Highway 215, on April of 2019, it was brought to the attention of the County Council Board with over 200 petitions that the statue of W.F. Drummond would be placed on the property that once was owned by Booker T. Martin, later known as Martin Blue Moon, which is presently owned by Fairfield County now. That night, on April the 9th, 2019, the County Council agreed that a monument instead be placed there. And I have the paper here, I want you to see. This was in April of 2019. It was placed in the voice, in the Chronicle, on the front page of this. In December 2020, County Council has not moved forward on the project in any way. We have once again signed petitions for this. We have petitions signed again for that to be, to take place. The progressive citizens group of Jenkinsville need to move forward. The progressive citizens of Jenkinsville have more projects that is being looked into to enhance Jenkinsville. Just to mention a few, we have, we have planned for our fishing tournament that was there before. A volleyball tournament at Lake Monticello, as well as pickleball. A yearly cookout on the lake. Also, at the recreation center in Jenkinsville, we would like to have yearly activities there at the, at the recreation center, which belongs to the county. I have spoken to Mayor Greg Ginyard about the plan, and he agreed 100% to work with us in the events that we'll have. County Council seemed now allowing us to do nothing about the foundation project. County Council was going, I'm pinning you. Okay. I signed again, so I'll be back.
John Jones.
Good evening. John Jones, District Four. I'd like to bring to your attention something that probably a lot of people are not paying attention to, and that is ordinance number 806. I keep these historical records of the regular meeting agendas, just in case something like this should transpire, and here it is. That is on November 28th. Ordinances, Resolutions, and Orders, Section C, First Reading by Title Only. Ordinance number 806, An Ordinance to Appropriate Funds from the Local Hospitality Tax Special Revenue Fund, established pursuant to order number 725, 2019, to provide funding for tourism, related cultural, recreational, and historic facilities, including the South Carolina Railroad Museum, which is pretty cool, the teachage located on the grounds of the County Administration Building, and a cultural memorial wall to be established on the site of the historic Martin Blue Moon property in Jenkinsville. That was a total of 76 words. Now, here it is today, the very same exact verbiage, but added to it is, "and a proposed amendment to appropriate general fund revenues in the amount of $922,022, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." There has been something added to Proposition 806 that was not there previously, yet they are calling this the second reading. No. This is the first reading. When you add something to it, it becomes the first reading again. Somebody's trying to slip something in there. At least, that's exactly what it looks like, and historically, certain members on this particular council are notorious for doing just that. So, backing up to the memorial wall. What makes this property historic, and what would the proposed wall cost? We spent $600,000 out there on a statue. All right? Has anybody been out there and looked at it, bringing their family, going, wow, look at that? There are 108 statues of Dr. King in this country. We didn't need that. What we need is fire protection. What we need are ambulance services that are staffed, and what we need are police. And you're blowing money on little self-aggrandizement projects. Stop it.
Jeff Schaefer.
I want to make sure I get the right ordinance. I think John just talked about the ordinance, and he gets up here specifically, often enough to tell you about procurements and ordinances that you seem to like making every week. I think at some point, week after week, we'd run out of making ordinances and suggestions of how to spend taxpayers' money and how to change things. This should all have been done 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, but we continue to keep doing the same thing over and over again. I'm just curious, are we, is the plan, and I sent an email to the administrator and to Mr. Roseborough this week regarding this piece of property that we're going to have as a memorial park. And just for the record, back in 2016, I came up and proposed that to the council, that Mr. Drummond's monument be moved from being stuck in trees and bushes where no one can see it, to being brought out into public, along with other people who might have this monument exposed to everybody. Then in 2019, the paper ran it, and it was talking about it later. But if we're going to have a monument, I would think that in the all-inclusive spirit of woke politics, it should be all-inclusive. Black folks, white folks, pink, red, polka dot. They live in the area, they've done something worthwhile, they're respected by the community, put their name up. I think that's a blessing. But W.L. Drummond was certainly beloved. They built this big, beautiful monument. I won't take the time to read it because I only got a minute. Maybe I couldn't finish that, but he was the superintendent of Jenkinsville Public Schools for 24 years, and the comments they make about this man, I don't care what color he is or what they say about him, you don't get these kind of comments unless you're worthwhile. A Christian gentleman, modest, unassuming, honest, skillful, loyal, patient, sympathetic, and courageous, consistent source of strength in the community. His humor always pleasing, his judgment always sound, his influence increased with the years. I mean, it goes on and on and on. They should have moved this thing out and put it there, but instead, we've been jerking around and making a project out of something I have no idea. And I don't know what this is going to cost people, but don't you think the whole public should have their say of what's going to be there and what's not going to be there? I think that's part of what's ticking me off, but I'll save the rest for my second part of my meeting here, but consider it all-inclusive and not separate. We've got enough separate things going on in the community. Hope I made that very clear.
Randy Bright.
Should I show my back to the citizens, or should I show it to you guys? Well, it's a rhetorical question, and it makes a great point. And what makes a great point is this ordinance that Jeff and John have been just talking about, it embodies, it embodies every reason why we should not have another meeting from this group. The voters voted loud and clear, no more. Two-thirds of them in District One, no more. The citizens said loud and clear, no more at the citizen survey. The employees said no more when they walked out en masse, and still are. The employees said no more during this employee's survey. The citizens said no more on November 8th, and yet, we're going to extend this madness, this madness that this, this ordinance reminds us of. It includes firefighter retention and with tourism. What kind of ordinance does that? You can't vote on that. That's not even related at all. Come on. No specific dollar amounts for what you're going to give the allotted money to. No specific wording that details how this process is going to go. No specific wording on how you're going to fund the upcoming and ongoing upkeep, whether it's a monument, whether it's a teachage, which is a monument in itself. And then, we go down and we look, we've got a retention bonus that's going to incentivize people to stay for another six weeks? What are we thinking? Good grief, no more, please. This is insane. We're spending money that we said at the budget time we don't have, but oh, Christmas miracle, despite what all the citizens said, we've got the money. And we're finding it now to just throw at the public, throw at the problems without any plan, without any ongoing plan, without any current plan, without any specificity, without making any sense. And yeah, you're going to rationalize, well, the firemen protect tourists. Come on. We've got a lot of tourist activities here that need it. I'm all for paying the firemen. I've been for it for years, and you guys have fought me on this, along with all the other first responders. But this is not the way to do it, to incentivize them to stay for another six weeks. It's just crazy. Come on. Cancel that meeting next week. Follow the will of the people, please.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
We're now down to item seven, public hearing, an ordinance to appropriate $1,027,000 to Economic Development Department to use as additional funds for the construction of a prospective building on Parcel Nine of the Fairfield Commerce Center. Tax map number 184-00-00-096-000 for future economic development needs, derived from a portion of the proceeds received from the state sale of the Fairfield County property to Old Council, APG South Incorporated in 2021, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order to number 754 as part of the Project Wentz agreement, and from a portion of the proceeds received from the sale of Fairfield County property to O'Clair Cooperative Health Center in 2022, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order to number 775. It is now 6:21, so we open up this public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak? Dr. Robbins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Willie Burrell.
My name is Willie Burrell. I live in Greenbriar area of Fairfield County. Been there all my life. And some of the things that we really need in the Greenbriar area, which we don't have, one of the things.
Excuse me.
Is the road repair.
This is a, this is a different matter.
Okay.
This is the wrong section.
Okay, this is, this is a public hearing, so you probably.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right. I can, I can stop right here.
Okay. That's okay. That's okay, sir.
Carl Bell.
Is this on the ordinance? Is this on the public hearing for the economic development? On the spec building? Is this about the spec building?
No.
Okay.
Roberta Gay. Is it still the same?
Okay.
Jeff Schaefer.
Yes.
Where are we building the spec building? I've got 2 minutes and 50 seconds left for you to spit out, tell me where you're building it. Why don't you list where you're building it? I'm presuming it's in an industrial park, is that correct?
Item seven. Okay, stop the clock for a minute. Item seven. An ordinance to appropriate $1,027,000 to the Economic Development Department to use as additional funds for the construction of a speculative building on Parcel Nine of the Fairfield Commerce Center. Tax map number 184-00-00-096-000.
Yeah, thank you. And all the dashes and all the zeros, exactly where is that?
Start, start the time back.
So where is that specifically? Is it in an industrial park? Is it on a road? Where is it? Well, like I said, it's always a pleasure to stand up here and waste my breath, and you nod off and not answer my questions. That's what I call being transparent. And speaking of transparent, here's the thing that I really want to make a point with, whether I get a chance to get up here again or not. Fairfield County is now open to certain number of citizens, certain number, abiding by social distance rules in order to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in our community. We will follow the advice of federal and state leaders and implement guidance issued by the CDC and NIH. We also strongly recommend that masks be worn while in the administration building. Fairfield County will continue to livestream this meeting on county YouTube page in order to provide information to our citizens and in the interest of transparency. I'm wondering why, in the interest of transparency, that you're able to do this, you shut off the comments section on YouTube. Care to comment on that?
Sir, if you're not going to talk about the speculative building, your time is up.
I just tried to ask you a question on the building, and now I'm asking you about transparency. You want to answer those things? Or do you want to tell me this is why they voted you out?
Mr. Schaefer.
Don't bother. Save it. Hold your banger there.
Randy Bright.
By bringing up the spec building, it reminds us, a spec building does no good unless we have an economic development plan, unless we have an overall strategic plan for the county, and we have neither. We don't even have a plan for the vital sewer plant. We don't even have a permit. We haven't even applied for a permit. We don't even know where it's going to go. How can we be focused on a spec building, which I personally think we do need, and I understand, and the state recommends that we have one? But we've got to have all our ducks in a row, or that spec building is just going to be another empty building in Fairfield County, and that's the last thing we need, is another empty building in Fairfield County with nowhere to go. Without planning, without research, without coordination, we're going nowhere. You want to know why this county, one of the richest counties in revenue per capita, has the seventh highest, the seventh highest unemployment rate in the state? It's because, for two years, we've gone without planning, and we just froze things up against the wall and see if they stick, and they don't usually. A spec building without an economic development plan is useless. It's just money down the tubes. A spec building without a strategic plan, a strategic vision for the county, and that was mentioned we were going to have at the beginning of this past year, but we don't have even the remnants of it. We can't even get a purchase manual put together, and are we looking, looking outside to do a purchase manual? Good grief. There's plenty of counties that are able to do the purchase manual on their own, and we could copy that from them and get the best ideas. If you've got people running your departments that can't put together a simple purchase manual, we certainly don't need a spec building because any prospective business is going to see right through it. We're not a place worth doing this to. Please, please. Please, please, end it now. Retire, no more meetings, no more putting us behind. We've dug a hole deep enough for the next regime, please don't dig it any deeper because the next regime will learn from these lessons. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Um, thank you. Now down to item eight. Oh, we now going to close the, um, the public hearing at 6:29 PM. It is now closed. Now we're down to item eight, ordinance resolution and orders. First reading by Tyler Only. Ordinance number 807, an ordinance to adopt the 2021 South Carolina Modified Codes as follows. The 2021 International Building Code with South Carolina modifications, the 2021 International Residential Code with South Carolina modifications, the 2021 International Fire Code with South Carolina modifications, the 2021 International Plumbing Code with South Carolina modifications, the 2021 International Mechanical Code with South Carolina modifications, the 2021 International Fuel Gas Code with South Carolina modification, the 2020 National Electric Code, NFPA 70, with South Carolina modifications, and the 209 International Energy Conservation Code, Energy Standard Act.
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
Second?
It's been moved in second, since it's by Tyler Only, no discussion. All in, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show 6-0. We're now down to first reading by Tyler Only. Ordinance number 808, an ordinance to appropriate funds received by Fairfield County from the South Carolina OPR Recovery Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund to be allocated to establish a five-year agreement with Fairfield Behavioral Health Services for use in accordance with the technical proposals submitted to the South Carolina OPR Recovery Fund Board on November 16, 2022, to support the Fairfield OPR Response Team developed in partnership with the Fairfield County Sheriff's Department, Wentzboro Public Safety, Fairfield County EMS, 911 Dispatch, and the Fairfield County Coroner's Office.
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
It's been moved in second. All in favor, aye? All opposed, nay? Let the record show 6-0. Second reading, ordinance numbers 805, an ordinance to amend section 2-291 of the Fairfield County Code of Ordinance as and if amended so as, so to as to provide for purchasing and procurement authority and to approve a new procurement manual for Fairfield County and to repeal section 2-292 through 2-303 of the Fairfield County Code of Ordinance relating to provisions made obsoletely by the adoption of the new procurement manual.
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Um, we want to note that the, um, the Administration Finance Committee met and they make recommendation to the full council to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye? Posers nay? Let the record show 6-0. Item D. Second reading, ordinance number 806, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the local hospital tax special revenue fund established pursuant to ordinance number 725 of 2019 so as to provide funding for tourism-related cultural recreation and historical facilities, including the South Carolina Railroad Museum, the teachers located on the grounds of the county administration building, formerly the Mount Zion Institute, and the cultural memorial wall to be established on the site of the historical modern blue moon property in Jenkinsville. And a proposed amendment, section eight, to appropriate general fund revenues in the amount of $922,022 to provide a one-time retention incentive payment as follows. Full-time employees and, and volunteer firefighters with at least 20 accused points. A one-time payment of $1,500. Item two, part-time employees as needed. Employees and volunteer firefighters with fewer than the 20 points, a one-time payment of $750. The funds appropriated in subsection eight shall be dispersed after December 31, 2022 to county employees who are actively employed on the date of the third reading of this ordinance. For the purpose of this ordinance, elected officials are not considered county employees.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, I think someone has proposed the amendment. You have an existing ordinance of precedent reading, which is the original hospitality requirement. And this is an amendment being proposed to add another spending measure to the, to an existing spending ordinance. So someone has to propose.
Uh, uh, um, would, would we do that after we made the motion and come and have somebody come back and amend it?
No, somebody, you can just propose the amendment and the question is adopting the amendment.
Okay.
And then if the amendment is approved or not approved, then the question is some second reading.
Okay. Can we get a motion to, to approve the amendment?
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
Second. It's been moved in second that we approved the amendment to, and, and let me read it again so everyone understands. To appropriate general fund revenues in the amount of $922,022 to provide a one-time retention incentive payment as follows. Full-time employees and volunteer firefighters with at least 20 accused points. A one-time payment of $1,500. Part-time employees as needed. Employees and volunteer firefighters with fewer than 20 points. A one-time payment of $750. The funds appropriated in subsection eight shall be dispersed after December 31, 2022 to county employees who are actively employed on the date of the third reading of this ordinance. For purpose of this ordinance, elected officials are not considered county employees. Okay, so we, it, it's been moved in second. Um, all in favor, aye? Posers nay? Okay, let the record show, there's four, two. This is for the amendment. Okay, now let's go back to the total. And we have to give second reading. And, and this to include everything. So I'll read it all over again. The second, the amendment has been approved. Second reading, ordinance number 806, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the local hospital tax special revenue fund established pursuant to ordinance number 725 of 2019 so as to provide funding for the tourism-related cultural recreation and historical facilities, including the South Carolina Railroad Museum, the teachers located on the grounds of the county administration building, formerly the Mount Zion Institute, and the cultural memorial wall to, to be established in the site of the historical blue moon property in Jenkinsville. And a proposed amendment, section eight, to appropriate general fund revenues in the amount of $922,022 to provide a one-time retention incentive payment as follows. Full-time employee with volunteer firefighters with at least 20 accused points. A one-time payment of $1,500. Part-time employees as needed. Employees and volunteer firefighters with fewer than 20 points. A one-time payment of $750. The funds appropriated in subsection eight shall be dispersed after December 31, 2022 to county employees who are actively employed on the date of the third reading of this ordinance. For purpose of this ordinance, elected officials are not considered county employees. Can we get a motion, um, to approve with the amendment?
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes. So I want to make sure I understand. So someone could be hired today with the county, work two weeks, get a $1,500 bonus, and quit the next day?
You would hope that our HR process would do better than somebody getting hired and quitting the next day, but I think legally, I'm.
But it could happen.
People could, of course.
But, but it could happen, right?
Sure.
And, and I want to put on the record too that I think when dealing with a million dollars out of the budget, that it should have been a supplemental appropriations request and three readings and a public hearing on that as well.
Um, thank, thank you, um, Mr. Paulie, there will be a public hearing on the 19th, am I right? Dr. Roberts? So a public hearing is scheduled, we can't approve amendments, we can't approve ordinance without public hearings. Okay, um, if no other discussion, all in favor, aye? Posers nay? So let the record show, four, two. In favor of the motion to include the amendment. Item E. Third and final reading, ordinance number 804, an ordinance to appropriate $1,027,000 to the Economic Development Department to use as additional funds for the construction of a speculative building on parcel nine of the Fairfield Commerce Center. Tax map number 184-00-00-096-000 for future economic development needs derived from a portion of the proceeds received from the sale of the Fairfield County property to Old Castle APG South Incorporated in 2021, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in ordinance 754 as part of the Project Windsor agreement, and from a portion of the proceeds received from the sale of the Fairfield County property to Eau Claire Cooperative Health Center in 2022, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in ordinance 775.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Second, it's been moved in second. Um, any discussion? Um, um, Mr. Whitaker, Ms. Williams, please, if you don't mind, state um, the monies that are coming from other places and also from the county, so that citizens will know what that is.
Oh, she's here. Come up here. Mr. Willoughby.
Yes, so current funding allocated for the spec building is $2.5 million in a, in a grant from the Department of Commerce, $2 million from the Dominion Energy Settlement, uh, $500,000 that was previously allocated by county council, um, $200,000 in a zero-interest loan from Central South Carolina Economic Development Alliance, and $50,000 in Dominion Energy Utility Tax Credits.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, aye? Posers nay? Let the record show, six, zero. We're now down to board and commission minutes for information, only non. Item 10, board and commission appointments. Disability and Special Need Board by Desta Hall, District Five.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show, by Desta Hall has been appointed District Five for the Disability and Special Needs Board. Disability and Special Needs Boards, Nancy Gerber, District Seven.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show, five, zero. Um, to Nancy Gerber being appointed to the board and, and commission minutes, commission appointments. Old business non, new business non. We're down to the county administrator report.
Good afternoon, um, just to give you an update on what's happening with the River Road Fire Station. Last week, we held a pre-construction meeting with Hillman Construction. They're the contractor who got the bid for the fire station. Um, in attendance were the architect and engineer with Infrastructure Consultant Engineering, ICE. They're the consulting group that designed the fire station for us, along with the superintendent and representatives from Hillman Construction and the county's fire chief, Jason Pope. The goal of the meeting is a typical pre-con, is to go over their permitting, uh, project schedule and any other procedures as they get ready to start work out there. Uh, Hillman was giving a notice to proceed. They have 240 days to complete construction, which is give or take about eight months. Um, they're waiting to hear from a subcontractor responsible for the erection of the building to finalize the actual start date, the mobilization date. But the goal is to have to start construction, um, in February of 2023. But if that moves forward or back due to anything they hear from subcontractors, then I will be sure to give council the next update. So I just wanted to let you all know what was happening with the fire station.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, we also have on here about the dedication and ribbon cutting for the Herman W. Young Fairfield County Detention Center. We've reached out to the family about a ribbon cutting dedication ceremony. They've requested that it actually happen in March or April of next year. So, um, we'll work with, coordinate with the family on a good date that works for them and get that date finalized, and the invitations will go out to everyone about that actual date once we coordinate with the family. So any questions on that? All right, and the final thing is, um, as you all know, we had the two-day workshops for the Recreation Economy for Recreation Economy for Rural Community Grant. Uh, just want to make the announcement that there will be a third workshop this Thursday, December 15th at 6 o'clock PM. It will be a virtual workshop for those who may not have been able to attend the Monday night or, um, Tuesday all-day meeting. Anyone who did previously participate in one of those workshops should have already received the invitation to register and attend the virtual workshop. For those who were not involved on, um, last Monday or Tuesday and still would like to be involved, you can register, the registration is up on the county's Facebook page right now uh, for that Thursday night workshop. Uh, the planning partners, after we, at this workshop, we will finalize any action items associated with those five goals that came up last week. Uh, planning partners from EPA will then transcribe all of the information to present a draft plan to the county. Once we get that, we will be seeking goal champions or those who've participated in this whole planning process to serve on subcommittees, to work with each goal and finalize the plan. So the plan will be finalized based off of people who've been involved, the county, and the EPA just kind of facilitating the final drafting of the plan. Um, and so again, everyone who signed up, who attended workshop one or two or signed up will get the invite, and those who would like to participate can go to the county's Facebook page to register for Thursday night's workshop.
Um, I have a comment. One of, one of the things, um, um, this grant is significant to Fairfield County. It, um, and, and the partners that we have working with us, um, especially for the federal government partners, but then our citizens too, um, was very engaging, and we need to continue to engage in this process so we can see, see what comes out in the end. However, but one of the things that I want everyone to note is there, and I probably need to use the correct word, possibly, some grants on the other side of this so that we can take advantage of this work that we are currently doing. That's what makes this, um, this, this grant so important to this county. It can, it gets us in the, in the pipeline to do additional work that's going to help this county grow and prosper, especially as it relate to recreational opportunities. So please, um, take advantage of it. But also, um, um, Mr. Whitaker and Ms. Williams, let's please try to get more people. I don't know how we do that, okay? Maybe we need to send stuff to our churches. I was talking to Mr. Roseborough, um, last week. And one of the things we talked about is, how can you get more people involved so that, um, it reflects more of the community? Okay? Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, thank you. Item 14, clerk to council report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, just wanted to, uh, make an announcement that there will be a special called council meeting this coming Monday, December the 19th, 2022, beginning at 6 o'clock PM.
Um, thank you, Dr. Roberts, and also there'll be public hearings, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. We're down, down to county council time. Do we have anyone?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to really thank the, uh, public for their participation in the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities. We had a wonderful, uh, array of attendees. Uh, people were interested in the second day, and people really contributed greatly to our, um, information that was shared. We also had, um, the Carolina Adventure World to provide lunch and to really, uh, participate with us as well, and that was really very, very nice. So I'm hoping that everyone, uh, who was involved and those who are interested really. So I'm hoping that everyone, uh, who was involved and those who are interested really participate in the meeting that we're going to have, uh, later this week. But I'd like to really thank the community for participating.
Chairman Bell. Chairman Bell and members of council. Here we are again with no plan. We received an agenda on Friday stating we were voting on a retention bonus for employees and firefighters. Retention usually means there is a goal or set time you have to meet in order to get the bonus. Mr. Bell, it probably would go over better as a Christmas bonus. Keep in mind that in April during the budget, we had no money for employees and we also cut departments by ten percent. Since then, we have given a bonus to the employees that they are getting in quarterly installments because Chairman Bell stated we couldn't give it all at one time. A raise recently that they will receive this Friday on their paycheck and now a retention bonus. This bonus can be received in approximately two weeks and the employee can walk away the next day from Fairfield County. Guess you had to make sure you received your fifteen hundred before you left.
I guess, and your wife did too.
Don't get me wrong, I will say tonight and have stated numerous times, along with councilman Gilbert, that we needed to take care of our employees and first responders. But we need to do it in a way that is productive for the long term. A bonus does not do anything for a employee's overall salary. If we have a million dollars that we can use for employees, why not do a cost of living for the next couple of years or pay more toward their insurance premiums? There's many ways that employees could benefit if you had a plan. If you remember on November the eighth, the citizens of District One and District Three spoke that they were not in favor of their councilmembers' decisions the past two years. And here you are again, making decisions with no plan and rushing things through before the end of the year. I will say in closing to the citizens of District One and District Three, I thank you.
Wow. Anybody else? Okay. I want to thank the people of District One also for doing what they did. You know what, when people get used, things happen. But let me talk. The county administrator and his report at our last meeting talked about the new website. Please let me follow up. Our new slogan is Fairfield County Getting Better Every Day. Within the website, there's a place for news of the county so that our communities can get factual news without bias and falsehood, prepared in truth. My hope is that we could use the website and other means from the county to also publish our ads. Other counties are also seeking this advantage. However, with Fairfield County, it is imperative our local, whatever, sometimes it's called a paper, has its sole purpose to hurt the county or mainly folks that they cannot control or if their work is not done by a certain set in the community or if they themselves did not bring it forward. Fairfield County should not engage in publishing ads in a paper or tabloid that is more expensive, that provides negative, unwarranted commentary, absent of fact, and simple bias. Example, just last week, they wrote an article about our county administrator, Fairfield County Council employee as a Fairfield County Council employee as a finalist for the Chestertown Manager. And an article about another finalist. In the article, the council employee was the villain. The other finalist was the saint with a positive article. People of goodwill need to stop accepting this garbage. Please take a look at the difference. I believe if you have a sense of right, you will say no more. Moving along, the data from the CAG concerning counties of the Midlands region that we received, we received just last week. Fairfield County was dead last on the median income. Before continuing, the source of the data came from the U.S. Census Bureau twenty sixteen to twenty twenty community survey. The United Way Association of South Carolina, the Self-Sufficient Standard of South Carolina twenty twenty. The median income for Fairfield was thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. Newberry, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Richland, fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. And Lexington, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars. In those five years, Fairfield County increase, increase was zero point eight percent. Newberry, six point five percent. Richland, ten percent. And Lexington, eleven percent. In other words, Fairfield County stayed the same. As I've told you before, people just make up stuff and get their friends to write it in a paper. So now when our regional and state leaders see Fairfield County progress over these couple of years and the building blocks that have been established, yes, they say, we've made significant progress. At the CAG, we establish objectives for benefits, for the benefit of Fairfield County, and it's written down so we can take advantage of future grants, especially coming from the Economic Development Administration for the federal government. It reads as follows. Improve water and sewage capacity in rural areas to support new industrial, commercial, and residential development to include development of a new wastewater treatment plant in Fairfield County. Mr. Whitaker, along with our consultants and engineers, have developed timetables for completion. So when you hear people say they have not done this or that, these people just make up stuff to hear them talk. They don't know what they speak of, nor do they know the process. And saying these comments below, my hope is that our citizens are mature enough to understand the comments without an attack to the messenger or being upset. It is not my intent. My comments are just the mirror. While some folks may not believe this, I really hate conflict. However, I do not have a spirit of fear. The foundation for growth and prosperity has been laid and based on what we were able to do in only two years. I believe that the lack of growth and prosperity was deliberate. The county and town knowing Fairfield County needed infrastructure years and years ago, and they did nothing but allow their system to go into decay. Twenty-four million dollars were borrowed and spent. Did they build a wastewater treatment plant? Want versus needs, huh? There are many who will not support our public school system. They pretend to be our colleagues, our friends, while preventing their kids from going to the same public school independently of the quality of their education. The counties around us such as Kershaw, Richland, and Lexington have total integrated schools. We have been told this too is an impediment to economic growth. The example used is large businesses with progressive leaders strive to be a part of the total community. And with a school system divided not by programs or functions with specific interests but by something else, although not a showstopper, indicates a divided community. Not my language, theirs. The developed workaround is to sell the broader area. A local paper perpetuates in the minds of many a status that is unhealthy and unwarranted. These things hurt the county. Why would every article concerning the public schools be negative or with a negative slant? Why is there such an obsession, a desperate need to do that? This county must look at who or what institution is targeted and who or what institution is praised. As a matter of fact, he talked about me losing. The current council was talking, was targeted negatively with bias and falsehood for twenty-three months. And that paper was sent out free to the citizens to hurt this county and to prevent its growth. Yet the council made improvements. Although sometimes I said to Mr. Whitaker and Ms. Williams, in manufacturing, this would have been done earlier. But as I review, this council and administration made significant progress, especially when you see where we started. Representative McDaniel, a former council member, the state NAACP and I did a drive-through of the housing in the county with the focus in Winsboro. To the surprise of none, but we all felt very uneasy about the substandard housing that exists. Both Representative McDaniel and I have talked to the CAG about grants for these efforts. These comments now below are mine and not theirs, and it's free. The government of Fairfield County must be careful in the deliberation of a state-of-the-art animal shelter while not understanding the needs of our citizens. Many will advocate for air conditioning for the animal and yet would not advocate for a fan for our seniors. Please do not, please do not let this be divisive. Currently, a local whatever makes it their business to engage conflict, to keep a myth alive, to prevent the total citizen from working together. Their commentary is a certain set is right and the others are wrong. It is their commentary not true for factual. And they are so familiar with manipulation, they pose themselves as mind readers. Fairfield County must rid itself of this cancer. I also challenge the next council, those in District One and Three especially, right? To not go backwards to a place or a person with blooming budgets, a lack of physical accountability, the selection of projects and contractors based on friendship with the failures of those projects, and organize a tax system to prevent projects in certain communities and the status quo as, as was shown in the data from the CAG. Let's follow through and get this work done and move forward with the work that has already been started. Our future currently is bright. Fairfield County is getting better every day. Now let's imagine, if you will, Fairfield County in her greatness. Our location is a gift. Our total citizenry is a gem. Our coming together as equals will be the bacon powder in the pound cake, meaning we can rise together. So before I leave tonight and while we got this audience, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Can we get, um, there's no, there's no executive session, can we get a motion to adjourn? Second. It's been moved in second. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay?